The standard rule of thumb for electronics and boards is usually about 20 years, 25 years. They stop making parts for those systems during this time period. So again, if you replace your jack, there's no assurance that your electrical systems are going to hold up very good.
How much would it cost if we have to do that?
Full electrical systems would probably be in excess of 20. Controllers, labor.
There's 57,000 already.
How much?
57,000.
Fifty-seven thousand.
Because you said, well, you said 37,000 to replace the jack, and then 20,000 to replace the electronic system, so that's $57,000.
So what is your recommendation?
My recommendation, again, I can't speak on your behalf financially, what I would do, whether this was the system, I would personally install a new system, get a new elevator in there. By the time you start doing the replacements and everything, you still have, again, I don't like to compare them to cars, but you do a, you put a brand-new motor, you put a brand-new transmission in a 1950 car, you still have a 1950's car. And that's the unfortunate nature of upgrading systems. We take care of elevators that are 100 years old. The systems are outdated. When they do fail, we replace them with new updated parts. Or complete their, depends on the pricing, depends on the, how far you personally would like to take that, that would be your call. My personal recommendation is I would turn it off and shut it down and reinstall a brand-new system.
After, we've spent a ton of money already.
I'm sorry?
We've already spent a ton of money. I'd like to have that recommendation before we spend all that money.
Well, being that the system has failed us many times with these many items, we, again, we didn't know the addition of the system.
And a new system is what?
I'd have to get back with you on that. I'd have to get a quote from my supplier.
Who gives ballpark?
I would say a brand-new system on that, with a brand-new jack, would be close to $100,000.
That's my thought.
This is too big, and I have been too busy since I've sat here this morning and make this.
Right.
I think we need all the figures of what it would be and what our expenses could be on fixing this so it does work. We've been fixing this elevator forever, it seems like.
Right. Yeah, we just came onto the project back in, back in, excuse me, February this year, which we're honored to do, thank you for your opportunity.
So how about you give us the quotes for the different options?
I'm sorry?
How about you give us the quotes for the different options for what we might have to put in this, or probably going to have to put in this, but in a building?
Right. I didn't know, I was speaking to Bill, we were discussing some options on ultimately, it's none of my business, what were you projecting for the building? You know, how long were you planning on using it? I would say, is the juice worth the squeeze? You know, are you going to put $100,000 in this elevator and I use it? That's something I always like to consult my customers on. Being that, you know, the traffic in the building does seem low to me, I don't know what your future plans are with it. I believe it does only serve one floor. So...
Well, and that might depend on how much we're going to have to spend on this elevator.
Right, right, I understand that.
So, you know, let's get all our, let's get all our figures together and our options together, and then we can make a decision.
That sounds like a plan.
I also want to be clear that you mentioned earlier that you guys had put the elevator here in the courthouse when they did the addition, but you just newly came onto this project because another company actually was dealing with this project until you got here and then found out it was completely messed up.
Yes. Yeah, we've had great success here. I personally was your service technician at your courthouse for the past eight years and became the superintendent of maintenance, started doing the repairs and everything, coordination. Until, I mean, we've had very, very few problems with this elevator. I mean, very, very tiny miniscule items were ever an issue with this system. But any time we start to come into older elevators again inherently, their age has a huge factor in reliability of the system. And then when you have work performed that, again, it's drawing a fine line, I don't want to devame anyone, that maybe wasn't to a higher standard.
Right.
Then you start to, you come onto a project where it's, you look at it and you say, where do I go from here? How much, how much money do you want to put into this? How do you consult your customer on the issues that are here present? And what are your solutions? I mean, I have solutions for everything that you ever want to do, but they cost money. You know, like I was speaking to Bill, if you did want to go about installing a brand-new elevator, you can put it on the outside of the building. It might be close to $100,000 if you have a brand-new elevator. Okay, there are different options for that. The biggest concern and the hardest thing to wrap your head around is putting all that money into an older system. And when it is old like that, again, it's retrofitted, it's working, but it is, it's old. You know, it's again, it's been old, why not buy a new car, you know? So...
If you can get quotes and stuff like that, and we can kind of talk back and forth over time.
Sure.
And we'll get it figured out. I mean, just like Martin said, $100,000 is not something that can be made today, so if we can kind of figure out our options, figure out the longevity of the building, what the plans are, then we can kind of go from there.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bill, you got anything else?
No, I don't have any.
Okay.
That was enough.
Yeah, that was more than enough. IT director, Mr. King here.
I don't have a whole lot to report, just some little things. The new router came in from MetroNet, installed that on Columbus Day. Our call quality problems seem to have alleviated themselves prior to that, but that router was already ordered, so we went ahead and installed it, trying to head off that problem coming back, because we never did quite figure out what was causing that issue. So far, we've not had any call quality issues this week that were above and beyond anything that you would expect. An occasional bad call would to me be normal, since you don't know where, which side it's coming from. So that was installed last Monday. Last Monday, the new server for Loud to separate the financial and tax systems into separate servers, the way that they prefer, was installed. So far, that seems to be working well, haven't had any problems with that. The Odyssey server was installed the Thursday before last, that is holding our images before they go onto the state. So far, that hasn't had any problems. Mostly this week, we've had a lot of problems with minor things with Odyssey where either they weren't planned for on the Odyssey side, or they didn't realize we were doing something a certain way, or it just wasn't deemed a concern prior to the switch-over, and so we're finding little things that we're having to tweak and adjust. Things with the scanners working a certain way, where they worked just fine with JTS, but we're having to tweak it to work with Odyssey. The jail desk, we moved everything, I moved everything back last Monday when I was here. I had a little project I worked on while I was waiting for the technicians to finish things. Looks a lot better in the control room now, much more workable. No extra cables visible on the desk like it was before. Everything's much cleaner and straightforward, more professional looking, so. And then the final issue, I'm trying to get some quotes together. I've only gotten one quote so far on the license for the camera system for the recorder. It's over $1,200 is the one quote. I've been trying to get some matching ones from other places to bring us up to 32 licenses for the cameras. Right now, we're at 16. So we've got all the cameras installed, but it's not able to record on all 30 of them right now. So I'm trying to get quotes on that software, because so far, only one vendor has given me a quote, and I'm not even sure that they're quoting me the right thing right now, to be dead honest. So, that's all I've got. Do you have any questions for me, or?
Good job.
Today makes marks three months for me being the IT director, so I've been trying to do the best that we can. On average, Skylar and I are handling about five to 10 regular trouble tickets a day beyond the stuff, the projects that we're working on, so. One thing I thought of when Bill was talking about that door downstairs, we do have a camera facing that door, so if we do have problems going forward...
We know who it is.
We should be able to see, okay, if it broke yesterday, we should be able to see who, why it broke. So, not that I want it to happen again, but if it does, we should be able to see what's going on, so.
Okay.
Mr. President, could we maybe, if Mrs. Kim would be kind enough to send an email to the courthouse explaining that probably that door one does burn the motor up and it's very expensive, please don't do that, that might be of some help.
By the way, you're on camera, so if you do it, we know.
And it probably wouldn't hurt to mention the same for those doors up here, they're the same way.
Yeah, in any, in all instances.
County attorney, he called me this morning, his car was broke down on the way back from Indianapolis, so he's not going to be here this morning. Do we have a council representative? No? You want to explain that, by the way, health insurance quote that we got back?
Okay. I'm trying to think. Do you remember how much they anticipated the insurance would go up this year on the highway, their health insurance they have through the union? I thought it was like, maybe 5% or was it 6%?
6%.
And it didn't, it didn't go up that much. I think that was kind of a, was that kind of a cap, that it wouldn't go up more than that. So, I gave, I gave you guys a copy of what they've sent, and they've broken down the rates by single and family, and how much, and they quote 100% of the plan, of course, it's just like the other health insurance for everyone else in the county. County pays 85%, employee pays 15. So they give a rundown, so that's still, this program has saved us, what did we calculate last year, Martin, about $17,000 over a year? So, that's good, that saved us, and then the fact that we've held, held down the cost of that, of course, that's a pretty, pretty huge group plan, so.
Okay.
The other, we have that, we have that other thing from the union somewhere else.
That's down here on the, on the end of the, yeah, except somewhere else on there.
Okay.
Okay, that's all the mail we have there?
Yeah, well, yeah, we did have, and I didn't bring it in with me, I think, we did have a letter, but I will bring that to the next meeting, this from a patron.
Concerning, yeah, we have a, concerning the...
Cemetery.
Cemetery board and how good a job they was doing. Okay. Okay. Old business, the last month, the Conservation Club come in here, their contract is up on Manloaf Park, and they requested an extension. And I talked to Chris on the phone this morning, when he called me, he had looked over the contract and agrees that that contract is proper and recommends that we go ahead and approve that contract if that's our wishes.
Was that for 25 years?
Twenty.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. President, if there have been objections, I will move to approve the contract as presented as being reviewed by the attorney for 25 years.
Second. We approve the 25-year extension on the contract with the Conservation Club from Manloaf Park. Is there any other discussion on that from anybody? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. New business, authorization to tear down parts of the highway garage. When we, when we, we signed, we made agreement to build a part of what we wanted to build for the highway garage, which amounts to office and a shop area. When we stake that out, that building is coming right up to the corner of the present highway garage, so to have room to work, we need to tear down two of those bays of the open shop area, which we have sealed off and are not used because of its condition, but we need authorization from the commissioners to do that. And that needs, they're working on a pad down there, down there today, that needs tore down right away to make room so we can work and proceed with the building.
Do you need a motion for approval?
Yes, we do.
I will move that we approve the tearing down of at least two of those bays, or whatever is necessary to do the job to get started on the new county highway garage building.
Second. Move the second that we authorize tearing down the north two bays of that garage. And to have to do that immediately, is there any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is a new hire, new hire for the highway administrative assistant.
He already, he already addressed that?
Yes, we did not, we did.
Oh, you didn't vote on it?
We did not.
Didn't. I'm so sorry. No, you didn't.
The administrative assistant we have has turned in for her retirement the 2nd of January, however, she's on FMLA, how long she's going to be off, we don't know. So we, we did interview, the commissioners interviewed along with the highway supervisor last week. I forget how many, but it was a lot of people.
Fourteen.
Thirteen, thirteen or fourteen people. We had some pretty high quality people, and again, we had, we had people that could not afford to take the job on our pay scale. At any rate, the highway supervisor has recommended that we, that we hire Angela Copeland for that job. Possibly, hopefully she can work part-time down there before, before Kim's retirement comes, comes effective, because right now, there's no one down there to do the job. So what's your wishes about the highway supervisor's recommendation?
I move to approve. Second that motion.
Then move the second that we approve Angela Copeland's appointment to the highway assistant job, administrative assistant job. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The next item is an addendum to the Highway Union contract. We have a wage opener on that contract every year. Historically, they have been, they have been given, the council has given rate across the board raises. This year, they gave $500 to all the county employees, which compuses to 24 cents an hour for the highway employees. So an addendum to the highway contract reflecting that raise would be appropriate.
Need approval?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second. Then move the second that we approve the addendum to the contract reflecting 24 cents an hour increase for the highway employees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Four-way stop, 200 North and Elfin Hill Road. Month or two months ago, we had a wreck out there at that intersection. Two people, or one person I think it was, was lifelined out. As a result of it, we've, we've got tort noises from both parties. When you come, when you come to that stop, from the north or from, or from the south, there's a, there's a dip in the road just west of, just west of there, and you have to, you do have to get out at the intersection almost to see anybody come. And it's been suggested that we put a four-way stop there, such as we did out in Waterloo Township out to the Squires for, for the very same reason.
Mr. President, I'm going to move that we put a four-way stop at that location of 200 North and West 30th and Elfin Hill. Also think, I would like to request that we advertise it well, because people get into the habit of just simply driving, and if we can do it, advertise as well as we can, I think that would help. I will move to put a four-way stop there. Second that.
Then move the second that we approve four-way stop at 200 North and Elfin Hill Road. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We might also put, put a second stop sign on, on, down the road, so that gets their attention before they get out.
Stop and head sign.
Because when, when you get to that crossroad from the west, you have just come over the hill, you can't see that stop sign until you're, until you're right at the crossroads.
You want to add that to the motion?
Well, we could just, we don't have to, he can just do that. Okay. That's the end of our agenda. Do we have any patrons' concerns?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Joe?
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. I think you all know me, my name's Joe Schultz, I live in Fairview Township. I'd like to talk to you for a few minutes about the proposed wind farm, it's been on for the last several years. There's significant opposition to that wind farm, it's Fairview and Posey, maybe the rest of the county too. When this got going, in 2011, we had a, it was in February 2011, we had a meeting at a neighbor's farm shop, and there were 46 people there, mostly farmers, homeowners, property owners. Everyone was opposed to it that was there, and they're still opposed to it. There's just so many negative things about the wind farm. We could talk about it all day, but I don't think it's good for the county. It changes the whole look of the county, it's there basically forever, obviously, you have to sign an 85-year lease. It's not good. There's three of us here today, but, you know, I can assure you, there'll be a lot more people in future meetings if we need to, just to convey to the commissioners and everyone that there are a lot of people opposed to it. Our opposition up to this point has been just not to sign the contract, and that's pretty much put it on hold, I think it's caused some problems in getting the windmill field established. We feel that the next level is probably to make elected officials, commissioners, county councils, whoever are aware that we are really serious about this, and we're really strongly opposed to it. There's, I understand recently, of course, it's in the paper, that you've hired an attorney to represent Fayette County in, I guess, negotiations with the windmill company. Have you been having meetings with the windmill company, or?
We have had, we have had two.
Yes. Is, in the future, are you planning to have public meetings or public hearings, or, I mean, what's your thoughts on that as far as?
Well, just to be clear, as our representative president has, Zane and I have not met with them.
Okay.
He's our representative right now for that, so we have had no private, Zane and I have had no private meetings yet, we've been kept informed overall, okay, that we're not meeting.
Basically, all it is that I know of is to just kind of hear everybody's side of the story, no decisions are made or anything like that.
But to answer your question about the hearing, yes, it would, there would be, when, when there was, you know, we got the information of what they were wanting off and what they were wanting to do, then there will be, then it will be public hearings. They wanted to have one soon, but I don't know, there's, there's enough information to have one yet.
Well, there's...
But there's not going to be anything done, I can assure you, before, before any public hearings.
Okay.
But we'll sure have their damn code, so to speak.
And I don't know where it stands with the negotiations, but I know there's, at the time we had this meeting...
Well, Joe, there really is no negotiation, the only thing we have done is listen to what they have to say.
At the time we had that meeting in 2011, we just kind of totaled up after the meeting, and there was, I think, what, like 12,000 acres, actually, it's roughly, of the people that were there in that area, farmers, or more.
That sounds about right.
That, you know, we just totaled up the people that were there opposed, there's at least that, that much opposition.
Are you talking about just in Fayette, because this goes in Henry and, Henry and Rose County too, this project that they're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, just in Fayette.
Nothing, just in...
Yeah, this was just in Fayette, most of the people at the meeting were just basically in our area, Fairview, Harrisburg, you know, Southern Posey, but also, I know before, when this was going on, there were tax abatements being talked about, you know, with Fayette County was offering tax abatements. I'm sure you're aware of this, but I'm not, I don't know what it is now, I assume it's the same, but these windmill projects, as of a couple of years ago, they were getting 32 cents on the dollar, federal subsidy, and they went in and built a windmill field somewhere. And then you talk on top of that, giving them tax abatements, I don't see, if this comes up again in the future, which I'm sure it will, I really don't understand that at all. I mean, they're getting a federal subsidy the way it is, and this is supposed to, as a way, all my information, you know, you can get on the internet and read it wherever you want, but the current subsidies are supposed to end in December 31st of this year. They anticipate Congress will probably pass another bill extending it, but the way it is now, these wind farms, they just have to get established on a projected, on a project. 5% of their total expenditure, if they have that done and in place, technically, they qualify to get the federal subsidy. And I don't know if a push is being made in this county, maybe with the storage area, they're storing the turbines and the blades and everything for Randolph County, if that qualifies them to get their tax, their federal subsidy for this county, I don't know, but...
I would think so.
I would think so either, but anyhow, things work like that, it could very well be that way. But I just, the point is...
In fact, Joe, I don't think it's the same company that we're talking to that is storing them up here.
It's a different company, I wondered about that.
It is different. Does this next area and that one?
Yeah.
Can't remember the name again.
That, that's the main focus of us being here today, like I said, was just to really convey to you guys that there is significant, strong opposition to this wind farm. I've talked to other people in other parts of the state, I've been and stood beside them, and they were running different areas. They cause a lot of problems. They, my biggest, one of my biggest concerns is the depreciation of property values on farm ground and homeowners. It has to drop, you can read the figures, you can get on the internet and study it, there's debate about it, pro and con, but mostly, it's negative. It really depreciates, and it's logic, if you look at somebody that's wanting to buy a couple hundred acre farm, bare ground, but they go look at it, 200 acre farm, it's got three or four windmills on it, you can say, well, yeah, they're stimulating the income off of it, but it's hard to farm around, it's hard to get airplanes to crop dust and spread herbicide and insecticide. There's just a lot of negative issues about it. I hope this board and county council and everyone involved really does your homework and studies this, because there's a lot of negative aspects about these windmills. And that's, like I said, at future meetings, if this progresses, we will be glad, we'll have a lot of people here next time, just to convey to you our feelings, but that's all I ask, is just please study it and take it seriously, I know you are, but us as landowners and homeowners in our part of the county, we're sure taking it seriously. It's a very, it's a scary, it's a scary sight. You read about all the problems associated, there's been studies done, there's, some people have health problems, livestock, dairy cows, horses are affected. Some people have health problems, livestock, dairy cows, horses are affected, vibration, noise. Of course, it's going to tear up the roads. You can just go up to Randolph County and see what's going on up there. I know that's part of it, but that's what I had to say.
Okay.
Just please study it and there's a lot of opposition to it. Just wanted to be aware. I mean, maybe you aren't aware of how strong it is, but it's very strong opposition.
Well, Joe, we thank you for coming.
Okay.
For coming. This, you know, this is a big, big project, so it's going to take a lot of studying and listening to.
Yeah.
Everybody's got something to say and everybody will have their say.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay. Thanks for your time, Russ. Thank you.
And I can assure you, there will, you know, there will be a hearing or hearings when this comes up. It's not something that's just going to be...
Okay.
It's gone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other patrons' concerns?
Uh, no, we'll just wait. I mean, that's why we're here, just to see, see how everything's going. So Joe pretty well said what I...
Yeah. Well, where everything's going, we're ready on a minute. We're just trying to find out what everybody's got to say, them as well as you.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other patrons' concerns?
I don't think we have any other things.
Well, it sure is, it sure is standing out.
Eight, eight, Carlos here.
Well, I bet he don't want to say.
Yeah, that we doesn't.
If not, we need approval of the claims and the payroll.
Second.
Been moved the second, the claims and the payroll be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. No other items on the agenda, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Been moved the second, this being the Fayette County Commissioners be adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried, meaning adjourned.